Those were the windows that are put in the northeast classroom that we're converting into the new junior high science lab. So those were put in over spring break. It looked really good and definitely, definitely need to replace those. Like I said, there's not a lot of other things on there. And you'll see Judy has a note there, City of Cherokee, that's two months together. So one, that's why it looks more than higher. Other than that, general fund is pretty much business as usual. Building fund.
All right, so real quick, I was just gonna ask, how many windows did we replace?
I don't remember how many's down there. There's ten, I think. Ten, I think, in that classroom, and then there's a couple in Mr. Jordan's office. Pretty close to it. Building fund, lucky search your company. Some work. There, I'm a little lost. I don't, I think that, I remember what that was. Judy, do you remember what that was?
It was one of the, the final repair of all of the ice machines. I think that element of the ice machine.
Okay, okay. All right, that one kinda could remember. Okay, and then in the child nutrition fund, this is lucky, luck and bill. We had to have them come in and once again work on our freezer, but hopefully those things will stop being a problem every so often. We're gonna have them come in this summer and kind of redo that refrigeration freezing system in there, which is gonna be pretty expensive, but we'll kinda let them along, but it's gonna be a pretty big project for to do when you got a bunch of food in there and you're trying to serve it the next day, so. Trying to get few supplies and things like that, bought before the summer hits and we start on those projects, but so nothing really out of the ordinary at this point.
That's a good question. It says two months of water. What happened? Like, what did we?
That's just two months worth of bill. That's a bill.
Um, it just, we just.
Our board made this up early in past time. The bills didn't come in time. I was gonna do them, but I didn't, they just stayed in my folder, so I didn't move.
Oh, I guess that makes sense. Thank you. Turn me off.
Denver, anything on the activity fund? I'm gonna put you on the spot, because I don't remember the, do we know regional track? We kinda know what, what we brought in, I mean, as far as the date that day. I mean, 'cause I, I think we talked about it a little bit, so.
I think we brought in about, like, twenty-two hundred, somewhere around there.
Would be our part, about twenty-two hundred on regional track, so. I mean, that's, that's good, and that's why, you know, being able to host those events, we do get paid a little bit. Of course, that's the SLA ran concession that day, and I know they always make, you know, a good amount of money. And other expenses that we may have that day, for our starter, meet referee and those things, the LSA does reimburse us for that, so. You know, like I said, it's kinda nice that here, I mean, we do get some benefits from hooking up with bands. I think that's, I don't know where that falls in your list. Mine's the very bottom of that, that doesn't, that doesn't. You know, right now, when you look across there, our fund balances, everything looks good. And I will talk just a little bit more in my report at the end of the meeting on semi-line estimates on where I think our fund balances will be actually at the end of the, this festival year. But right now, everything, everything's healthy and looks to be in good shape there. Again, I'm gonna have to keep an eye on some things, but I'll, I'll talk more about that later. We do have three resignations. Letter E there, a Dutch, a fax teacher, and she's leaving to be the elementary principal at Memphis. George Reed, he's retiring, and Shannley Turner, who was her professional, and is taking a job, I believe, at Allen Cleo as a teacher. But we do have those, I will pass around those letters if y'all would like to take a look at them. But we do have those three resignations. And then we do have some fundraisers. Princess T. Party, June first or tenth. House member Brooke Painting, June third, and they're raising money, that's F C C L A, and those funds will go towards their national conference trip that's in Denver in July.
Is that all you have, A through N, right? Any questions or concerns, A through H?
Make a motion to approve A through B.
Does raise me a motion, do I have a second? Heather's second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number three, principals reports?
Lot of stuff going on, you got about three pages. So I'm not gonna read everything, I'll just hit some highlights. One, as you can see on the end of the table, the Lake Chiefs, track team was named the Class A state academic champs with a four-point zero. You have to have exactly ten students to list, and they have to compete a regional track. We actually had more than that, we could only put ten four points down on a non-weighted system. So we have a weighted scale, we'd have to convert it to a non-weighted, so they actually have to have straight A's. So that's pretty big. We were actually co-champs with another school, I don't think I named that other school, but either way about it, that's pretty big. The Chiefs and Lake Chiefs were both regional track champions, and we hosted regionals here, they both had excellent showings. As you can see, we got a lot of kids in the state track meet, at the state track meet. The Lake Chiefs were fourth overall, and you can see they did very well in their events. I believe most of them ran or jumped or threw their best all year. We had a few school records that were broken. Riley Hensley broke the record in the four hundred, Abby broke her own records in the eight hundred and sixteen hundred for the second and third time this year. And then Kai, the boys, were sixth overall, and Kai McHenry broke the school record in the four hundred, which I think is a two thousand eight record.
I think it was actually.
There was one older, it was tied.
Sixty-six in oh-eight.
Yeah, sixty-six, yeah. So he broke it by quite a bit. Riley's was an A four record, I believe, in the four hundred, that she broke by almost a second.
Wow.
But they all did very well. Kenley Cole was the state champion in the shot put, and as you can see, we had several hit metal and were on the medal stand, so it was a lot of fun to go down there, they ran, they ran really, really well, I'm pretty proud of them. Riley Hensley was named the two thousand twenty-three O G B C A, which is Oklahoma Girls Basketball Coach Association, academic hall state in basketball. I think that has a lot to do with A C T score, I don't know exactly what all the requirements are, but I know that fills me with that. So state FFA convention, with a great showing at state FFA convention, my four get their state FFA degrees, Abby, Brandt, Hayden, and Whalen. A couple scholarships that a parent told me, that Miss Snyder told him that she's never in her teaching career ever had that many kids receive those scholarships, so that's a pretty big deal. And I think he was at Brandt's scholarship and Abby's scholarships. Tomorrow night is the FFA banquet at six-thirty. I also know some of our, I don't get all of our Northwest Tech events all the time. I did have some of them tell me that Lexi Williams and Kenley Cole finished fifth in the Hosa State C E R T skills competition that was in Tulsa. Our April Students of the Month, they don't know yet, they'll find out tomorrow, they were testing, so I couldn't make announcements today, so. High schools Gavin, Guffey, Haley, Wade, and our junior highs Trigreen and Judy Bill. State speech and debate, we're third place team sweepstakes, and we had some state champions there, Josie Shelton and Xander Jackson were the state champions in humorous duet, and Tyson McDonald were state champions in poetry interpretation. And then we had some state runners-up, Josie Shelton was a state runner-up in monologue, and Alec Tinwell in standard repertoire, and several others that did very well in place. Had some state finalists and others competing their state vogue one. They didn't go to state vogue one, it was Digital Charming, and then because of tornadoes, they got rescheduled with them next week, and I believe they went to Crossings Christian in the City for this. Olivia Courtwright received a superior rating, and then we had three that received excellent ratings. F C C L banquet is tonight, currently they're eating, and then the awards, I believe, is at six-thirty. The dinner started at five-thirty, I know that. Back for it is this Wednesday. The sports banquet is next Monday, the fifteenth. The high school awards assembly will be Tuesday, the sixteenth, at nine o'clock in the morning. That afternoon, we will have at the high school, we started last year, our eighth grade day to be a chief day, where then we have a dodgeball tournament, we have a video game tournament. Kids absolutely love it, so we decided to do it again. I think the dodgeball lets them get some frustrations for the winter out. Kinda safe now, 'cause they're soft oddballs. Then semester tests will start Wednesday afternoon, May seventeenth, and we'll take morning semester tests on the eighteenth, our last day of school is the eighteenth. And that day is also the eighth grade graduation, at seven o'clock, it will be in the auditorium. And the high school graduation this year, weather permitting, is going to be outside on the football field, because we have a senior class of thirty-two or four, I think it's thirty-four. And once they get their entire families into our auditorium, it's going to be too full. So if the weather's nice, we're gonna have it outside, if not, we'll have to move back inside and have a cold floor area. And I'm sure I missed a lot of other stuff. It's been busy.
I have Mrs. Patterson's, she's at the F C C L A banquet, so she emailed me her report. State testing started on April twenty-fifth, third and fourth graders are finished with state testing, and fifth graders will be completing the last dare, dare test this week. She says that she's very proud of the students and how hard they've worked this year. We had a great day at the J and R track meet, and would like to thank all the volunteers that day, made it a great day. Sign up for our Chief Explorers summer program is currently open. Says it's a great program that offers lots of fun and learning. Those dates are June fifth through the twenty-second, and that program is Monday through Thursday, eight-thirty to noon. Breakfast and lunch are provided, no cost for that. And she also said that they are having their Super Kids Day on the sixteenth of May, just kinda their end of the year celebration, and so they're excited about that. And the elementary awards assembly will be Wednesday, May seventeenth, at nine a.m.
All right, number four, discussion and vote to approve or disapprove the resolution for schools and libraries, universal services, new rate for twenty-three, twenty-four. This resolution authorizes filing number form four seventy-one, application for funding year twenty-three, twenty-four, and payment of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and new services.
So all of that to say that this is a program, federal program that we follow each year, that this is a big discount on our internet service. So that's, that's basically what we're agreeing to. It would be, you know, close to, right at eighteen thousand dollars per year, and with this knocks it down to about fifty-eight hundred dollars, so.
Questions on that? If not, I'll make a motion to approve, do I have a second? Does there a second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number five, discussion and vote to approve or not to approve contracts with the following vendors for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four, A through H?
Should have all of those, just thought we'd try to do this in one swoop here. Barlow Education Management Services, they help us with our federal programs, and take care of a lot of the high-scene things, they go along with it. Their services are six thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars a year. We do get a member force, member discount with that. Again, they, they kinda help us stay on track on federal programs in there, and they have a lot of things to keep track of with that, especially in this last part, dealing with the S R money and those funds. I would like to continue those services with them. Alcohol and Drug Testing Inc. for bus drivers and scoops. We use them for a long time, to come in and do all the drug testing needs, whether it be for those bus drivers and all the suits. We do that, they're selected randomly once a month, and we do ten suits when we do that. And so we have plans to continue that as well. Today's therapy solutions, physical therapy services, again, we use them for a very long time, I need to continue using those services. D and E, Alicia Bigheart and Carol Robertson, those are our L P Cs, and we are currently paying those, those two contracted people with federal funds, and so, you know, I've set it for a couple of years now, but that will be something that we have to reevaluate. This will be the last year that we have those funds available, so we have them available this next school year, but at this time next year, we'll have to evaluate our budget to see if that's something that we can continue to provide. I know it's a, it's a great service, and it's very beneficial to several of our students, so it will be something that we look at very closely, but as of now, we do still have the federal funds to cover those. S and B, CPAs and associates for the district financial audit. I remember Pat is kinda stepping aside from that, and they split those responsibilities, so those are two separate contracts now, one to do our district audit, and then Pat Carroll would still be putting together our estimate of needs and our other O C A S financial services there. So those are now two, two separate contracts. And then Northwest Beach Services, Shannon Ream, who's our speech pathologist and has been for the last two years, I'd like to continue using her for those services as
Do we have her exclusively?
She's here four days a week. That's what her contract states.
Right.
So she's here mainly Monday through Thursday, outside of that.
So that's not considered a, a full-time deal?
She's not a employee.
Right. But is that a full schedule for her?
So it's a contract service, it's pretty full, her, yeah. I mean, it's really more about the services that she's providing, rather than the hours, 'cause, I mean, she's putting in hours at night, all the weekends, and paperwork and stuff, but the contract states is being here for four days a week to make sure that those students are served.
I was just curious.
On the drug testing, is that for students to be able to play sports?
So any student that's involved in any extracurricular activity, we submit those lists at the beginning of the year, and so that, they are the names that get drawn from in that pool. And so in our policy, it states that if they do fail one of those tests, then those extracurricular activities are taken away. I believe it's three weeks for the first one, six weeks if it happens again. But those are, those are the students that get, get drawn, not.
And that, that pool, is that just a pool of Cherokee students?
Yes, yeah.
That's a policy of Cherokee public school?
Yes.
How do you feel the students react to that? You know, do you feel like any of the students maybe are like, you know, I'm, I'm not really innocent to proving guilty?
I mean, I don't, I think it's more of an inconvenience at the time when they're called, you know, down to do the, you know, the test, but, I mean, I think they're very aware that once a month, it's likely that that could happen, so, I mean, I think it's a good policy. Is that, I don't know if I answered your question.
Absolutely.
Anybody else, A through H, any questions? If not, do I have a motion? Others made a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Shane? Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number six, proposed executive session for the board to discuss personnel and employment items to include contracts and salaries for the school year twenty-three, twenty-four, school security and safety measures pursuant O S twenty-five, three oh seven, D one. I'll make a motion to convene into executive session, do I have a second? Heather's second?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Time. Six twenty-four? I'll make a motion to return, to, or acknowledge, to return to open session, do I have a second?
A second.
Does there a second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Seven thirty-seven, just like the air clock. All right, go ahead with the minutes.
During executive session, the board discussed personnel and employment items to include contracts and salaries for the school year twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, school security and safety measures.
Thank you. Does there a, number seven, discussion and vote to employ or not to employ Kirsten Harrison, fifth grade, and Victoria Plunkett, fax.
I would recommend that both of those ladies be hired in those respective positions.
Discussion, motion? I'll make the motion to hire, vote?
I'll second.
Does there a second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number eight will be no action. And number nine, discussion and vote to approve or not approve for D M amounts for the professional development events on attachment at eight.
Anyway, this is a little different way of being able to reimburse when teachers go to professional development, and the reason for it is because we're using federal funds. We've just kinda ran into a few difficulties in the way that we're trying to do some things, weren't doing anything wrong, it's just a little cleaner way of doing it, and so I've visited with people at the auditor's office about how to go about doing that, and so we can get that information. That's based on Oklahoma City and Nevada, Colorado, which is one of the places that they will be going this summer. So we can vote to approve these per D M amounts, and then when those staff members get back, we will know what days they were gone, and then we will just reimburse them for those per D M amounts for each day that they were gone, rather than gathering up all the individual receipts and things like that. Again, it's mainly because we're using federal dollars, this is a cleaner way of doing those things, so I would like to ask that we approve these per D M amounts, and those are, we have to do it specifically to those trainings, so one is for two staff members to go to Colorado for some special ed, professional development training, and then the other one will be for capturing kids' heart, that will be to most of our staff members that go to Oklahoma City in June. And again, those are federal dollars we're using, and that Oklahoma City training will be a one, one-time thing.
Questions on the per D M amounts? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Does there has made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Curtis, second, Judy?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
And discussion and vote to approve or not to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four temporary appropriations from Chad's Carol, you?
This is the split page, this is the third page. Or go back to the front page.
Oh, it's probably the most vulgar question ever. Oh, okay, there's that.
Oh, thanks. All right, that's just, this will, this will change, obviously, but this will get us able to start our next festival year in July. So general fund, temporary appropriations, four million, four hundred forty-three thousand seventy-two dollars, building fund, two hundred fifty-six thousand six oh nine, and child nutrition fund, two hundred fifty-four thousand six eighty-five. And the nutrition fund, two hundred fifty-four thousand six fifty-five. I'm sorry, yeah, I would recommend we approve the temporary appropriations.
Any questions on that? I make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four temporary appropriations from Mr. Carroll. Judy, or, I'm sorry, do I have a second? Heather's second?
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number eleven, super tenants reported.
Just a few things, go over here. Just a quick update on the sidewalk project. If you've been down Seventh Street, they've made quite a bit of progress, and I think they are just about to grant it. Last time I went to buy there. So when they finish with that, I believe they will go back to the elementary, which should be about the same time we're out of school. And they'll start working on those that go around the building over there. So we'll have a little bit to work around during our summer school program, but shouldn't be too, too bad over there. As Drew already mentioned, both our graduations, junior high on that eighteenth, high school on the nineteenth. And I'll let you all know what time you need to be there for pictures. That involves several of them. Summer projects, I've met with the maintenance crews, and I've also asked Mr. Drew and Mrs. Patterson to ask their teachers for any work order requests. And those should be turned in by the end of this week, and we will start kind of going through those and making a priority list. Nothing really big, just kind of some normal summer projects that we do. Little painting, waxing the floors, those types of things, but no real big projects are planned right now, other than, like I mentioned, down there in the kitchen, fixing that. My carryover estimates, I just kind of wanted to give you an update of, you know, where we're at and kind of where I think we're going to be at the end of this fiscal year. Right now, it looks like our general fund carryover, if we were to get all our federal monies in, which more than likely, some of those will come in after June thirtieth. But if we look at what we've spent with our budget this year and this fiscal year, it looks like we will be close to one point three million general fund carryover. So that's, that's good. I think that it's probably realistically going to look, you know, less than that on June thirtieth. But again, that's just because I don't think that some of those federal dollars will probably actually be in the bank. But it's money that we did spend this year, and we will get it back. So I think that's what we're looking at with the general fund. We should have over two hundred thousand in our building fund. That continues to grow even, even though we've had some added expense there. And our lunch fund will be in good, good shape as well. So a few things we're looking at right now, we're just kind of waiting to see what happens in the legislature. There's lots of talk with education funding. Right now, they can't seem to agree on anything. And so that's frustrating, and I don't mind voicing that frustration, because not just us, but all school districts right now are making plans for next year. And that's hard to do when you don't know what your funding might look like. The good thing is, I don't think that we're going to get anything cut, but there's different versions of bills out there. Some would provide us with close to three hundred thousand dollars in extra revenue that we weren't usually going to get, which would be great. Whether that's going to be one-time or not, I don't know. Teacher pay raises are being discussed, and those, those are much needed. And I stress to both our representatives and our senators, how important it is that if those things go through, that there be money allocated directly to us to cover that. However that comes, whether that's a one-time stipend, if they increase the pay scale, we have to have funding for that. We can't be left on our own to come up with that just in local monies. That's not going to be good for us. That's not going to be good for most districts in this area specifically. And we're not on the formula, we rely pretty heavily on gross production and local taxes, and those things can shift and change and go either way. And so, again, I've stressed, I think, about as many ways as I can, how important it is that, you know, pay raises are needed, but they need to fund it. And so they've got to get that taken care of. Hopefully, something good does come out of it. I think there's a lot of good ideas floating around, just got to get them to agree on something. So we will keep watching that closely. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so, you know, I would just like to say thank you to all of our teachers. We appreciate them very much, they work very hard, day in, day out, and they do so much more than just teaching in the classroom for our kids and our families and our school community. And we just can't say thank you enough. Also want to say thank you to our paraprofessionals also. They do a lot of things in the classrooms and for our kids as well. So if any of you or whoever may watch this later, if you'd like to do anything for our teachers this week, I know that they would very much appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bryce. Any new business?
There's no new business.
Number thirteen, make a motion to.
Littleville?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.